You're gonna do the guest thing or you ask him to get the name?
Mm-hmm.
He can talk to all of us. He can give you anything for things, you know. Round back over there. We're African American.
I would feel the same to you.
You're bucks.
Yes, sir.
For the rest of the district staff. That's what I'm thinking. They're not gonna want an answer for every question because they know.
Yeah, I don't know how you say this thing.
Yeah, so he's there.
I thought I set up folders with guys in there like Josh and I don't see them anywhere.
Fifty, sixty pieces of code.
Yeah. Absolutely, you know.
It's hoping you get some of your dedicated budget that deals with that.
Yeah, and that may be, hopefully, one that we could give them, so we'll see.
Is that you posing?
That's a photo shop.
I like it.
It's a photo shop.
Yeah, I can.
You know, this is foul.
I can do it. So I says, "Are you posing?"
Are we up and running? Television recording? All right, we reconvene at 6:30 PM. Action items. So, action items coming from our executive session. A consultation with legal counsel and possible action concerning any regular meeting and agenda item. No action?
No action.
No action.
B consultation with legal counsel and possible action regarding contractual claims or possible claims or charges, contractual modifications, or questions related to.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we retain legal counsel to file suit against the American Girl Grill for funds owed to the city in a fourteen-day period.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Are you hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. C consultation with legal counsel to discuss or deliberate possible action regarding commercial or financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we advertise and post the Marshall Point House, commonly referred to as the Otwell House, for sale by sealed bid in thirty days.
I'll second that.
For thirty days?
For thirty days.
For, well, sealed bid posted for thirty days. And the bids be open in, at the end of that period.
All right, so I have the motion and you second.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, I have another motion that we advertise for sale the properties at 9103 Rolling Hills Trail, 2701 Deep Creek, and 2705 Deep Creek for a period of thirty days with sealed bid.
I'll second that.
All right, I have my motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Do I have any other motion? All right, so we shall move on. I've already had a call to, a call to order, a call to roll. I don't need to do that again, do I? Okay. So if you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right, citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses. Two specific questions, any items not on the agenda? I have had one request for items not on the agenda, and that would be Clive Rutherford.
That's a bit short. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilor. My name is Clive Rutherford. I live at 20632 Highland Lake Drive in Lago Vista. You may have heard me voice concerns over residential height limit exceptions in the past. So it probably comes as no surprise to learn that I feel the city of Lago Vista's policy of freely granting height exceptions through the P&amp;Z Commission continues to cause concern and, in some cases, great distress. Just a few days ago, I met with a prospective client who's considering selling his home. It's an older single-story with a detached garage to which he has added a raised deck or viewing platform at about eight feet above the ground. He's been concerned to see two-story homes developed in his area, and of greatest concern is the one now being completed on an adjacent lot. The new structure not only takes away the views from his raised deck, but also left him little privacy in his rear yard, and since the new home is to the south of his property, has taken away a large portion of the available sunlight. I know that privacy and sunlight are not criteria in the P&amp;Z consideration of height exceptions, but perhaps they should be. Additionally, my client tells me he never received any notification of the exception application. I'm sure city staff can check this, but at this stage, it's a moot point as the structure is already built. This citizen of Lago Vista lives in the Highland Lake Estates subdivision, and his property's declaration of reservations includes the wording, "Maximum building height, not more than fifteen feet above the highest natural contour of the lot", as do the declarations for all lots in this subdivision. His decision in the face of these developments is to leave town. Frankly, it should have been the builder of the tall house should have been asked to leave town if he could not work within established height limitations. I personally have had the view that there are circumstances under which an exception might be justified. However, the manner in which exceptions are being granted at will, primarily to spec home builders, presumably to satisfy a profit motive, cannot be justified. So I'm asking the city of Lago Vista to declare that it will support the restrictive covenants which apply within the original villages which comprise Lago Vista, and cease even the discussion of exceptions. According to your own attorneys, the city cannot abrogate deed restrictions. So why risk alienating your citizens to satisfy so few? I don't have detailed numbers to hand, but I do have a list of the exception requests for the past two years, and it appears to be less than five percent of the number of homes built in that period. I'm told that an individual lawsuit to put stop to such actions would be expensive, but continuing down the current path, you risk offending many, which might result in broader legal action. The most prolific builders in our city do not seek to build outside the established height limits. It seems ridiculous that the city would pursue a policy for the benefit of so few and potentially harming so many. It may be that on paper, no harm appears to be done, but if you drive down Constitution Avenue, Santa Carlo, or Patriot, you'll readily see that these exceptions stand out like sore thumbs. Please put a stop to this.
Time that badly? Sorry. It's all right.
Mr. Mayor, is it acceptable to ask the address of the home that he's talking about?
Yeah.
3603 Constitution.
There's no address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, that is the only citizen I had that had signed up to speak during this session. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda at this time? Yes, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Sheriff Coleman. I live at 21205 Mount View Circle. About two years ago, I came in and requested someone to look into why the street I was, I had built on and was living on for the last previous two years, back in 2015, had not been paved. And shortly thereafter, someone from the city came out. They did pave it, but they paved half of it. Now, I'm just looking for an answer as to why the job wasn't completed because at the present time, and I brought something for you to look at, the entrance to the actual cul-de-sac has broken away. And for a while, I was able to get past it, but now it's so deep that it's making it almost impassable for me to get to my property. So I'm looking for some resolution. And if I may, can hand these out?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. Oh, ma'am, do you mind? Your contact information?
Here's a pen. Yes, ma'am.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak during this session? All right, so we will move into items of community interest. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415, the city council may report on any of the following items: expressions of thanks, gratitude, and condolences; information regarding holiday schedules; recognition of individuals; reminders regarding city council events; reminders regarding community events; health and safety announcements. I know we have a holiday coming up. The 21st.
Today's a holiday too, mayor.
Is it?
So the golf course, that's a holiday.
Life is a holiday.
There's a holiday on Monday, isn't there?
Yes, I've seen pictures of the presidential pen used to sign the closing documents.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of activities that are coming up in February. On February the 2nd, that is Saturday, first Saturday, the Lions Club is having their annual chili luncheon at the middle school. Tickets are available from members of the Lions Club are at the door. I believe the, golly, I'm gonna mess it up. I think it's 11 to 2, if I remember right. It may be 10:30 to 2. You show up at 10:30, we'll still get you a bowl of chili. Is it 11:30?
Yeah.
Okay, 11:30 to 2. I went the wrong way. But there will be a silent auction and raffle. This is one of our many fundraisers that we do for charities through the community and our activities. If you get the chance, come out and join us for some chili. Now, once you get through having your chili, then you need to go to the restaurant and pro shop at the golf course. We are having our season opener. There will be specials as far as drink and food. There will be live music. We're going to have a bounce house for the kids, and it's a nice bounce house. And we got, we got one with a slide on the side of it. It's a dandy. But bring your kids out so that they can play on it. We'll have $20 golf all day long. Come out, pay 20 bucks, and play all the golf you want to. I would suggest that you do make a tee time because there's likely to be quite a few people that want to play. Driving range will be open all day long or free, and we will have at least one, depending on the number of kids that show up, maybe two, 30-minute introductions to golf for the children. So if you get the chance, February 2nd, Saturday, come get you some chili, then come on out to the golf course, see the renovations that have been made. It's quite a change from where it was. The Lago Vista Golf Course. Lago Vista Golf Course. Highland Lakes Golf Course is not open yet. But with all the flooding and everything, it's delayed doing this until now, but we finally got it cleaned up. But so if you can, please come out and join us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the chamber has their casino night on Saturday, so...
Tickets are still available?
Tickets are still available, and Elaine's right there. She can get you all the tickets you need.
Anyone else?
I have one, Parks and Rec Committee had a meeting last night, and they're, they tabled the decision to make a, to name the, the new sports complex that's going to be over what we call Cedar Brakes. So we're, they're looking for citizen input for names for our new sports facility. It's gonna be largely grant money, and it looks pretty impressive. So we need names other than cedar trees.
Or Cedar Park. Pretty cool. All right, thank you. All right, item number three. Item number three says it's a presentation.
Recognition.
Recognition. It's listed under presentation.
Oh, okay.
Recognition of the Lago Vista Boy Scouts. So if y'all would, when I call your name, please stand up. I have Aaron Smith. Matter of fact, if you don't mind, come up front.
Come on up here.
Come stand up here with Ms. Smith. Stephanie, don't run away. Oh, you're taking pictures, okay. Aaron Smith. Andrew Rowan. Tyler Siska. David Hoofnagle. Dutch Foster. Zeke Foster. And Luke Deekman. Is there anyone in attendance? I can't see now, so is there anyone in attendance that I did not call their name? All right. So we recognize the Boy Scouts in attendance. Please, somebody tell us, one of y'all go to the podium and tell everybody why y'all are here, if you don't mind. Or Ms. Smith can tell everybody why y'all are here.
It might be better if it came from myself. So I am a leader within the Lago Vista Boy Scout Troop 198. I am specifically an Eagle Scout Merit Badge Counselor of three different badges, and it's specifically citizenship of the community, the nation, and the world. And so we are here fulfilling a requirement for citizenship of the community, attending a council meeting, and then hearing a lively discussion from all of you so we can hear many opinions so we can further discuss after that agenda item. We are specifically here for the downhill race discussion, and then we will kindly excuse ourselves to go further discuss that item afterwards. So thank you so much for their recognition.
So you're... You're here as a requirement? Y'all didn't come here for fun?
It is fun, they're just fulfilling it.
All right, thank you very much. Y'all may be seated at this time. And we will move to agenda item number four. Action items. Discussion and consideration of Resolution Number 19-1786, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas, authorizing the use of city streets for the Lago Vista downhill longboard race to be held February 3rd, 2019, and to authorize sections of streets to be closed during racing.
Mayor, this item was presented to the city as a request to bring a longboard downhill race to the city of Lago Vista. The purpose for the request was they really like our community. They think we have some very steep roads and that a longboard...
And it's challenging roads.
A longboard will go downhill very quickly on some of our stretches of road. So we've had this dialogue for some time now. The organization initially just said, "Hey, can we do this?" We've had conversation with them probably for four months or so in terms of questions that they've had, requirements that the city has. We've relayed back to them the process that the community typically uses for events such as La Primavera Bike Race is to present to council and then to request the use of streets and potential closure of streets so that they could host the event. We've informed them that this would have to be approved through the city council in order to make this happen. Included inside of the packet, which the council has and anyone can download online, is a map, which we're gonna put that up on the screen in a minute. But first off, we've got a video that hopefully everyone can see, except maybe the people at home, but we're gonna play this video that shows you what a longboard downhill race looks like.
Longboard, that's surfing, isn't it?
Pretty close. That's why we got the video. That's not Lago Vista, just at that point.
This is a really awesome venue because we're on top of Reading, Pennsylvania. You can see everything. We're at the Picota here, right at the top. It's a really steep, windy hill. Couldn't really ask for a better downhill setup.
There's some technical cornering, there's some other corners you just want to grip and rip, and then there's some kind of straightaways. You do a lot of drafting and passing. From like a racer aspect, it's a pretty ideal course.
We're getting a lot of different people from different cities. Really cool to get the whole longboard community together. All of us that are really into it, really just understand each other and like vibe off each other's adrenaline and just boost the power. I think the first right is gonna be where they're really gonna separate because it's gonna come up on them really fast. Comes out, it's their first right turn. They're all gonna be really tight, and it's a really hard right that they're gonna have to pre-grip for.
We had a big straight up here, so I was just trying to push like the hardest I can on the start line and keep doing like my best.
So a couple of things we want to focus on with the video, Mayor. First is just to show you what this race looks like. This is a longboard, a person on a longboard in a well-protected, hopefully, outfit, going quickly down a road and potentially sliding across the asphalt into a bell of hay. I think that's the whole purpose of the race. If someone stays up, then they win. The map is on the screens now, so this will show you what the requested map date is. The requested date would be Sunday, February 3rd. They're requesting you sections of Buena Vista, Roundup Trail, Fawn Circle, and Avenida Anne. The total length, I believe, is six tenths of a mile. I think that's what it measures out to be. There are a couple of requirements that the event organizer would have to do, and that's similar to anyone that's hosting an event. They would have to have a, they would have to have a police presence, which would be a contract with our police department, and they would have to provide insurance for the event. They would also have to provide sufficient staff to secure the race path. Again, similar to our fantastic bike race where we block off sections of the road during different times. The event would begin at 10:00 a.m. and then conclude by 5:00 p.m., so you'll see it would be an all-day event. And the estimate is 50 to 60 racers will participate throughout this day. Mr. Chris Egan is a representative for the group and is here to answer any questions concerning the event.
Mayor.
Sir, welcome.
Thank you. Well, I, yeah, I was expecting, I was gonna have questions. My name's Chris Egan. I'm a resident of Colleen, Texas. A lot of the racers are gonna be coming from all over Texas. Generally, we come here and we skate often. We skate Lago Vista, Leander, Austin, you know, everywhere. Not necessarily organized events, but you know, the same way people come out and, you know, they get together and ride bicycles together and run, what you, whatever. And it's pretty, just, I mean, if anybody has any questions about anything, say again.
Now you're looking for an organized race.
Yes.
So with this, I take it 50 people, you race four, five, six, eight people at a time, or...
We, we're probably gonna be doing four-man heats, yes.
And the time that's involved with these heats, each one?
How, I've been, I've been to several events thrown by this company, Insanity Board Shop, based out of San Antonio. There's never been any type of incidents. What happens is, you know, the racers go up there. We do preregistration, which is gonna be held over at Lowe's Grocery Store. All the parking's gonna be done over there. We generally kind of shuttle each other, carpool over to the site so we're not congesting up the road or any peripheral roads or anything like that. Everybody wears helmets. That's mandatory. Certified helmets, EPS foam. You're gonna see people wearing full suits, spine protectors, things of that. It's very safe, it's very, so it's very organized. It's always been very professional.
Is there, when you're done at the race, you have cars that take...
Yes.
Do they do it on a different route?
Yes, and that's the good thing about this particular route. If you look at the map, the way, the way the course is and everybody comes down, there's never gonna be any vehicles coming up the actual course. You can actually take that back road, if you look on the map, that goes back up to the top of Avenida Anne, I believe, to Lowman's. And that's pretty much where everybody gathers to, you know, where the start line is.
Avenida Anne is the start line?
Yeah, the top by Lowman's. The, the top, the, yeah, sorry.
They have communication, so if somebody needs to get into their house, something like that, you can hold the race up long enough for somebody to get home, get out, that kind of thing?
Most definitely. Communicate, walkie-talkies. There's never a shortage of volunteers.
Do you need a volunteer for a starter? Because Mr. Williams lives right up there.
I'm looking at my street right now.
Please.
Okay.
I can see your house from here.
Yeah.
So 50 to 60 racers, what's the support staff number?
The support staff? Let me check my, I had the owner email me some stuff.
Good to tell you, if you look at the map, Mayor, there are a couple of houses that do not have an alternate way out. If you look on Fawn Circle, for example, using this map... and out at any time, but there are going to be some properties that will be required to have assistance to get in and out of the residence.
Everybody's been notified?
No, sir.
It hadn't been approved, it hadn't been approved yet.
If it's not approved, we're not notifying.
They're going to give you two weeks to do it.
That's the request for what they're looking at.
The race is going to start at 10, do preregistration.
Do we send out a letter to all the residents?
And I kind of heads to the hill, carpool over there.
Not-
Just to let them know that this is going to-
Yeah.
If, if, if you don't mind, can we hold the questions until I open it up so that everybody at home and everybody can hear?
Mayor, to answer that question from the two counselors, if, if the council were to approve the race, then yes, we could send out notifications. It would be difficult for us to go house to house-
Right.
But we can send out notifications and emails and other communications letting people know that the race will be going on, similar to the list of activities for the day with the start times, finish times, and access points.
And you've checked the surface of all the roads?
Oh, yes. Several times.
Need to look at Avenida Anne.
There's a, I, I understand that there, I know there's a nice big pothole right in the middle, down at the bottom.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I watch out for that one.
We're aware of that.
I'm real, I'm very familiar with it.
Are, are you guys hoping to make this a recurring event?
I don't want to speak out of turn because I'm here speaking for the owner of the shop, but more than likely, yeah, that's how he handles most of his races. He has a race he holds down in Canyon Lake, he has two other ones in San Antonio. I've been to other ones up in Waco at Cameron Park. Off the top of my head, that's the ones I could think of right now, but usually they, if they turn out to be, you know, if we get a big turnout for it, then yes, he wants it to be annual. And I think this one is going to be one of our better ones. This is definitely one of the best locations.
If we approve this, do you have enough people to try to do some pre-work that'll go down and like on that one street where they don't have access? If you notify them, the people yourself?
Oh, we can do that.
Yeah, some, on some of the turns or where there's restricted access, that might be a good thing.
We, like you saw on the video, as far as just safety, safety measures and things like that, there's, you know, hay bales, there's, we're going to put up safety nets along a lot of the edges because, you know, in case anybody goes off the road, you know, you want them to get caught, you don't want them going down any of those ravines or anything like that.
Do you guys bring your own medics?
Yes, we do.
Mayor, originally, Mr. Egan contacted, contacted the city. He said, hey, we've been in the area, we've had, we've raced here before, we know the area, we'd like to know if you have interest in this coming in. And then he got us in contact with the owner of Insanity Board Shop who hosts these events. And then that gentleman wasn't available to be here tonight because he's traveling, and Mr. Egan volunteered to be here for the questions. So basically, it starts and ends with Ms. E, Mr. Egan, so that's why he's here with us tonight.
I'm very impressed with the route that you picked.
Thank you.
As far as I can count, there's only like five or six homes on this entire route.
Mayor, there, there are more, this comes off of Google Maps poll, and so there are some houses that haven't, that don't appear on here. But in terms of access, there are only a few houses that would not have an alternate access.
Yeah.
If access is needed for any of the vehicles that, you know, all they have to do is speak up, will shut the race down, they can get on their way, do what they have to do, it's never been an issue. That's how every other race has been handled.
Okay. Anything else?
No, good.
All right. Sir, if you will, I have some audience members who would like to address probably the council and yourself possibly.
Okay.
I have Teresa Moran.
Yes, sir.
If you would, please come in.
Sure.
Take your name and address for the record, please.
Sit back down. I just pick a front seat somewhere.
Hi, I live at 2808 Roundup Trail. It is down the street, about right here, and I own property from, from road to road. 2806, 2804, and 2813, so I own four lots on the race course itself. And I initially found out about the race through Facebook, and Mr. Mohammed in this Insanity Board Shop was advertising the race at my address, 2804. And I didn't want people showing up on my property thinking that I was having a longboard race at my house. And so I was kind of concerned about that, and so I started watching Facebook and what they were planning on doing. My major concern about the race is liability. Roundup Trail, like a lot of, of roads in Lago Vista, very steep, very windy, and it's got gullies and rain ditches on both sides of, of the, the roads with no shoulders. The hilliness makes it a great place to ride a skateboard, but people watching, it's not a good place to watch. There are gullies on, that drop off 25, 40 feet within feet of, of the street. And that, that worries me since I own so much of the property, if somebody's watching and then they step off, I don't want to get sued for a broken leg because-
That's what, we will not host an event like this without-
Mm-hmm. So I was real, I was really worried about liability, and the waiver they have posted on Facebook that they're telling everybody to sign protects them and Eagle Pass, not Lago Vista. He didn't change, and I think they may have had a race at Eagle Pass.
Yes.
That, that's, it's an old must be an old form.
That is not-
So it won't protect Lago Vista, and it won't protect me. So that's, that's my major consideration. I also have some consideration with the parking. He said 30 racers are going to show up, but there were almost 200 people interested on Facebook on coming to this race. And even when they don't have a sanction, when they have these unsanctioned races when they, they come, there are 20 or 30 cars, and I just think there's going to be a lot of people coming and trying to park in the neighborhood. And I think that when you put two cars on each side, there's, you're not going to have room to pass, two cars to pass, and I worry about the emergency vehicles if, if it's needed. And also their, their shuttle, he didn't say how they planned on running that. Lowe's doesn't know anything about the race, didn't ask for permission for that. And they're planning on using a U-Haul to, to carry people back and forth for the shuttle. And those were some of my concerns, and I don't want to fight the Boy Scouts, I just want to make sure that, that I'm protected and not liable.
You brought some great points.
Yeah.
Very much.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your service, guys. I know it's, it's a thankless job, but I appreciate y'all.
So you said hot dogs and stuff were, were at your-
Sure. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, so the restrooms, it's an all-day event, I don't know where they're going to use the restrooms.
Yes, thank you. Get that, too.
Can you answer some of those questions?
Yes. Which road was it you said you lived on again?
I live, I, I own, it's 2808 Roundup Trail, but my property goes from Roundup all the way down to the bottom. It's a strip.
Okay.
I own most of that hill.
You don't, where the, the curves right there?
Right here. Buena Vista and Roundup Trail, they, the properties go from road to road all the way.
Okay.
So I own four lots directly on the race track, on the race course.
Mostly where, where you're going to get spectators are going to be on the corners. I'm familiar with the drop-offs and the, the rain ditches and all the, there's not going to be much congregation around those areas. I do, as, as far as the traffic, the parking, we wouldn't park any vehicles up there on any parts of the race course, you know, just because it would be unsafe. That, that, that wouldn't happen. I'm sorry, I'm trying now.
Restrooms?
Restrooms, back at, back at the grocery store.
Okay.
More than likely.
Also, you may, if you're, if you have liability insurance, you may specifically stake people's properties.
Yes, that, that and the liability, the waivers that they sign. If any edits need to be made to that, I'm not sure why-
And if she's not-
The spectators don't sign a waiver.
Understood.
The homeowner does, but you don't, you're not waiving your liability, right? The homeowner doesn't sign the waiver.
I'm talking about the waiver on this.
The, the waiver's on the racers.
The waiver's for the racers, yeah. The waivers sign it just, you know, saying that they are on their own accord.
But you have a liability policy that should protect the citizens if they do get hurt on her, her property.
Understood.
Do you, do you have that?
Mayor, the, Mr. Egan doesn't, I'll let Aaron go, Mr. Egan doesn't have the policy, but we have a copy of the policy that the host has secured. So we do have the liability policy.
Does he assume all the liability that occurs on her?
Yes.
Including our neighbor's property?
I do believe so, but I'll have to review it to verify where it's at.
That's what she's looking for, is a-
Right, yeah, it's spot on, and I wrote it down and will verify that. Just wouldn't, I wouldn't imagine that Mr. Egan has a copy of the policy, but we do have a copy of it.
I have a copy of it on my phone, I don't have a copy on paper.
No, I just want to indemnify your neighbors.
All right, so- Got a question. Hold on. Hands are coming. Hold on.
You haven't been recognized yet. Sorry.
Next, I have Salima Harbison.
Hey, guys. Just from a small business, young family perspective, a lot of the small businesses that I've talked to are really into this idea of diversifying our tourism and finding other ways to getting people out to Lago Vista other than the golf course and the lake. And so this to us is kind of like a cool idea to start getting more people to think about coming out this way for different things and making the most of this beautiful view that we have, these beautiful hills. I'm in a unique position because I did grow up skateboarding, and I do currently do skate out here. Of course, I do my skates, but I skate out here all the time. And there's actually a big skateboard following at our high school. When I was volunteering in the front office, I was informed that they started a skateboarding group, and it's for a lot of the kids that don't play football and don't play baseball and don't have an instrument, and it keeps these kids out of trouble. And it's a really good, positive thing for kids out here. And so I think it would be kind of cool to have other things for other kids. We have lots of baseball, we have lots of football. And this also kind of goes into some of the things I've heard from young families about our Cedar Brakes property, where they think that the expansion parks, a skate park would be a cool thing. So on numerous instances in my involvement with small business owners and lots of young families, this is something that they're really interested in, our city thinking outside the box, right? We thought, we all talked about this, thinking outside the box for our community to bring in money, to bring in tourism, to start supporting our small businesses because it's, it's hard out there, guys, it really is hard. And the more people that we have coming out here once for this event, maybe they'll come back to come out and take their dad to the golf course, or come back and try this restaurant that they tried when they were out here this one time, and book an Airbnb. So we really need to start bringing people in for other things other than what we're known for, and I think that this is an awesome opportunity to do that. And maybe reach out to some of the young families because they're really into this idea. And I think it's kind of a disservice not to listen to the family element of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So the date, the 3rd, that's the same time as all the, we've got two, two other things going on on the 3rd.
The 2nd.
The 2nd.
This is Sunday, the 3rd.
This is Sunday, the 3rd, the day after.
Okay.
I think that's the Super Bowl, Mayor. It's the day the Patriots pick up number six.
I'm sorry.
That's on at night.
Do you, do you board after dark?
No.
Not, not, not really.
Yeah, too quick and not-
Some people, that challenge of going downhill fast is just not enough.
Yeah, not that fast.
Blindfolded, a bird box version or something.
Mr., are you going to look into restaurants?
Yeah, we have that on the miss.
And there's a couple opportunities that I think we have that we can present back to this, to this team, if, if something the council approves, and I think we can work together. We've had a great dialogue now, over the last couple of weeks, potentially even talking seven or eight times a day, so got a really strong relationship going.
Mr. Mayor, a lot of, a lot of kids have been already using Avenida Anne as downhill, so I see them on Sunday already, so.
And my street.
It's a great street for that, you know?
I know my youngest has a longboard.
Yeah.
He built a longboard stand while he was in high school to hang it up in his room. It's real nice.
Yeah.
I have no idea where he boards, but I know he's got one, so.
And he hasn't been hurt.
Yeah, but if we-
That's debatable.
I think this would be a, a good event, you know, but we just need to make sure that the liability of property is covered. Parking is going to be a problem in the neighborhood, you know, there's not a lot of, you can't park cars on the sides of the street.
The idea is to not, the idea is to do a lot of-
Please come to the mic, sir.
Excuse us.
Thank you.
The idea is to, you know, do as much carpooling and shuttling as we can, because, you know, even if we're skating the street, you know, regardless, I mean, we also don't want to congest traffic for other drivers that are trying to get around, but we don't want to congest traffic for ourselves trying to skate down the road. So, I mean, that was kind of at the, you know, always at the top of the list.
So I'm assuming you guys aren't bringing everything you need, so you're probably going to have lunch in the restaurants and use the-
Yes.
-convenience stores for drinks?
I, I go to, what is it, J&amp;J's every morning. Every time I come out here, get a couple breakfast burritos, yeah, right?
How, how long is the, the race? How long do you do this?
It's scheduled from 10 to 5.
10 to 5?
Yes.
Do you think it'd be a good idea to possibly get some porta-pots or something?
I think that'd be a great idea.
And, and maybe rent from her?
Who's that?
The, the lady that was just speaking. Oh. I'm just joking. All right. Ma'am, did you have something you would like?
What?
I need you to come to the podium and state your name and address.
I talk loud, I'm 10.
It's all right, I got people watching on TV that have-
It's like sign language.
And I'm short, too. Okay, since it came up with regards-
Name and address, please.
Oh, Nancy Jo Laranaga Priti, 19901 Mountainside Drive.
Thank you.
So since it came up with regards to standing on the edge of the road, which we don't want to be in the road, I know that that would not be a good thing, but usually when it's public roadways, when somebody's property comes up to it, there's still a certain amount of footage, to my understanding, that is an easement and not really technically her property yet, therefore it would fall under the auspices of his insurance liability stuff. So if I fell off there, I'm still cool. Just wanted to point that out, that there is an easement situation, that shouldn't be a reason to not do it.
But if you get an insurance policy that covers everything, then we don't have to worry about who's-
Hey, we got Obamacare, everybody's got insurance now. But anyway, I have a longboarder in my family, I'm super excited and stoked about this, as are the Boy Scouts. Go longboarding.
Make an answer. All right, so I don't have anybody else signed up. Anybody else that would-
Yes, gentleman in back.
Hi, I'm Matt, I'm a little taller. I'm Matt Garrett, I'm 3306 Emerson, Kev. What's the age of the skaters?
It ranges from under 18 all the way up 40 years old.
Dang. I gotta use your face cream.
I'm not going to be the oldest one there, so.
Right, got it.
So it, it ranges.
So what are going to be the major, in your experience, are they going to be 14 to 16, are they going to be 12, are they going to be?
No, I wouldn't say 12. I want to say generally, I see it's more closer around 16 years old and up.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sorry, just for the record, can you please state that into the microphone so the folks, because I'm sure there are people watching that would like to hear.
The, the age ranges from 16 years old and up, pretty much, from what I've seen.
And they want to know how old you are?
I'm, I'm, I just turned 40 years old.
Congratulations, you look great. Okay, so I'm thinking that if they, if this, you know, are they driving, are they not driving, you know, how are they going to get here, who are they going to be bringing? You know, if they, if they can't-
And they want to know how old you are?
You're going to be, you're going to be an introvert. I just turned 40 years old.
Congratulations. You look great. Okay, so I'm thinking that if they, if this, you know, are they driving, are they not driving, you know, how are they going to get here? Who are they going to be bringing? You know, if they, if they can't drive, they're going to be bringing their parents and all that stuff that's going to be benefiting the community more, okay? Those are the people that are going to be in the restaurants, okay? You know, you give a, a kid that's 16 years old, you know, some snacks and stuff like that, and they're usually pretty good. I'm trying to think of how the, how, I mean, because it does sound exciting, but there's a, there is a tremendous amount of liability. I'm trying to think of how the, the city can benefit more. How can it be a win-win situation? So, you know, maybe a, some communication between you and the city manager of, hey, what do you need up there? Maybe, you know, J&amp;J's is all the way down here. How about if we have, you know, a vendor up there or, or something like that, something that the kids can actually, you know, eat, you know, in the area from, something like that. Also, you know, we have this big bike race, and there is parking all the way to it. You try to control the parking, whoever organized that, there's parking up and down the streets. Even though they bring in portlets, the people that park all the way down, they don't use the portlets, they go in the bushes, there is trash all over the place. And so my, I, I would, if there hasn't been talk about a security deposit, I would encourage you to consider one. So that somebody puts up some money, they're going to make sure that that place is clean when it's done. Yeah, you, you're definitely going to need some portlets up there, up in that area. Regarding the insurance coverage, it's not just a policy. You want to make sure that they have third-party coverage as well as a special events coverage, and a million dollars is not enough. One person goes over the cliff, there's your million dollars. So make sure that that third-party coverage covers this as well, too. So that was my concern, was that, you know, the, who's going to be patrolling? How's the, how's, you know, we're talking about bringing people up there in a U-Haul truck or something. Who is going to be kind of watching over that? You know, if, if they don't show up or if they don't show up in time? You got 16 to 18, 20-year-olds out there, they're going to be going wherever they're going to go. Who is watching that? I just know that when we had the bike race, it was, it was chaotic, you know, for everybody living in that area. So I don't want that to be the case. I want it to be a good situation. And the way it's going to be a good situation is if the, if the actual residents, you know, are, feel protected and they, they don't have a lot of, you know, residual trash when the people leave. Let's make it a good thing, but, but this is where it starts right here. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
As far as trash is concerned and things like that, we could definitely show you better than we can tell you. I understand, you know, everybody's concerned about that, but we're a very tight-knit community. We're all people like, you're going to, like, you're going to look on Facebook and you're going to see that, you know, 200 people are interested in it. But that doesn't, that doesn't, that's not the numbers that are going to show up. You know, that's just people clicking and liking on it. All these races I've ever been to, we police each other up. You know, there's no trash thrown around, there's no disrespect to the neighborhoods. Anybody who's, that lives in the neighborhood, for the most part, we have a very good rapport with them. You know, we get rides up the road in Polaris four-wheelers and, you know, all types of stuff like that. I really, as far, if anybody's concerned about just, you know, people's properties being respected and things of that nature, it's never been an issue. And it's never been an issue when we go down there just to skate when it's not an organized race. You know, if somebody, occasionally we'll go down there and, you know, the police will get called, or, you know, the police will show up, or neighbors will come out, they'll want us to leave. As far as I'm concerned, and, you know, like I said, I'm 40 years old, so the people are with them, you know, I'm skating with, you know, they're going to be younger, but how it's handled, you know, if somebody wants us to leave, we leave. There's no arguments, you know, I'm not going to sit there and discuss, you know, whether we're able to be there or not, you know, these are, this is their neighborhood, so, you know, that's kind of my stance on it. But it's nothing but respect and...
I have a question for you. Do you have any idea about the numbers of people that will show up to, to race? Because I haven't heard any, any numbers there.
Well, it's listed, on, on the page, they're saying about 40 to 50 racers. The, the information I was given from the owner was about 40 to 50 racers.
Is that what you anticipate?
For this, it's, it's hard to call, but I, I believe so. I think there'll be about 40 racers at the least.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the audience?
Is there a, some sort of resume that can be submitted that they could do checks with other cities on how the, how the races have been performed?
I can. The, the owner of the, of the shop that I'm speaking for right now, he's actually in Miami at another skateboarding event. I can get with him and definitely get with... Yeah, definitely, definitely.
All right. Anybody else on council? All right, well, at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I, I think it, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be a good event to have in the community. I just think we need to work out, and Josh, you need to just finalize all the, all the necessary steps, but if we can finalize all the, of the, of the steps, I would make a motion that we have this downhill race. And it's in my neighborhood, so, you know, I'll be looking for you.
You're okay with the liability section so far?
I haven't, Councilmember Collins, I have not reviewed the liability section. It's certainly something that our office would want to take a very close look at, and if, if adjustments need to be made, we would want to recommend that before moving forward, but...
You'd want to do that again here? You'd want to run this annually or semi-annually in Lago?
Yes.
All right.
I would like to second the motion.
There hasn't been a motion made.
Yeah.
I made a motion.
Well, you did.
Yeah, I said, I make a motion that we have downhill.
And he did, he, there was a provision, you know, but it was...
Based on...
Pending that we...
Pending the liability issues and...
That we can, that we can complete everything.
Right, that we can complete.
And is the motion a resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a, a resolution number associated with it?
No.
No?
Yes.
Resolution number 19-1786.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Okay, so I've got the motion, I've got the second. Any further discussion?
No.
So I would like to point out, the race is scheduled for February 3rd. We do not have another council meeting until February 7th. So when considering this motion, we need to make sure that, you know, it is structured such that if we do approve it, it is based on everything being satisfactorily completed, you know, prior to February 3rd, where the race doesn't happen, so.
Correct.
Are you just talking liability?
Oh, no.
No, no.
No.
No, everything.
All the things we discussed.
Volunteers.
We have volunteers. Mayor, we, we have the, we have special events that happen in our community often, and we do have checklists of things that we do administratively for those special events. This wouldn't be any different. All the notes that you and I have taken here concerning the police presence and liability and restrooms and parking, all these things are going to be addressed. We will take the information that we received from Insanity Board Shop, we'll send it over to Aaron's office for review, and then we'll very actively get that dialogue going on that. But there's some other options that the mayor and I have pointed out here that we'll address those, and if they're not in check like any other event, then we'll pass that information back.
I have a question. Does it have to be February 3rd?
No.
Okay. So I'm just thinking if, you know, if for some reason things are not cohesive, we can't get the police presence, we can't get the porta potties, if things don't come together, I mean, is, this is not the only date that y'all can look at something in the future?
It's just the date he has scheduled, so whatever's required to make it happen.
But it could be later on in February if need be.
Yes.
And would it be a Sunday that you'd prefer?
Sunday or Saturday. More than likely, it's preferred a Sunday.
Thank you.
All right, again, I have the motion, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hear ye none, resolution carries unanimous. So we're not open tomorrow, but, and we have a holiday Monday, I expect to see you on the office Tuesday.
Hey, make it happen. I mean, if you want it, you want to do it all the time. We'll, we'll trust you.
The Boy Scouts can help with volunteering their services.
They can, that really is part of another...
Lifting some hay bales.
Volunteering eight hours.
Okay.
There's going to be a badge in there somewhere.
Yeah. As if that's a hay bale.
All right, number five. Discussion and action on Resolution 19-1787. A resolution by the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, designated certain officials as being responsible for, acting for, and on behalf of the city in dealing with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Recreational Trails Grant Program, certifying, certifying that the city is eligible to receive program assistance and that the matching share is available and dedicating the proposed site for permanent public park and recreational uses.
Mayor, if I may, this item has been prepared by our city engineer, but what we're looking at, if you recall from our previous discussions about the Cedar Breaks Park project, one of the things that we're trying to do is not only focus on the larger Texas Parks and Wildlife grants, but to focus on some other opportunities that, that their staff made available to us when Eric and I went and met with them. So this is one of those opportunities that we're requesting permission and authorization from council to apply for a trail grant. And as we've talked before, we have a larger group working on a trail project here in the community that is fantastic, and so what we want to do is be able to tie this into the overall trail project. So this max grant is $200,000. The match on that is 20%, I do believe.
40 grand? 40,000.
Oh, I was just looking to make sure that was the match, it was 20%. And so we're requesting permission from council to move forward with the application. If approved, then we'll bring that back to council for acceptance of the award.
Got it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I make the motion? You may, sir. Move approval of Resolution 19-1787.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second by Arch. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hear ye none, the resolution carries unanimous. Number six. The Lago Vista City Council will hold, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance number 19-01-17-01, an ordinance by the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending various sections of Chapter 3 Building Regulations and Chapter 14, the zoning ordinance, to consolidate all substantive requirements related to the exterior appearance of principal buildings in Chapter 3, including proposed new language and replacing them with references only in Chapter 14 and providing for related matters. This public hearing is already open, and it will be continued.
Yes, sir. About the only update that was different from last month, when it was discussion only, we added the language that Councilmember Robbins pointed out that was less than perfect, and we promised last month it would be in your packet this month. It's not really related to the exterior appearance directly, but it's in that same section. And certainly, it's our desire to, to find all those errors and correct them over time. The only other thing that came up last time was a, a discussion about whether the number 65% was too high or too low. The building committee, you know, we're, we're kind of looking at fees in the area, and they kind of recommended a, for other communities for us to use for comparison purposes, Lakeway, Leander, Marble Falls, and Cedar Park. So just for fun, I looked at all their ordinances and, and consistent with what Mr. Robbins told you last time, 65% is not out of line. It's at least that high, and in some place, some of those locations much higher than 65%. So, in some cases, it was 100% for the first floor.
Council, have any questions?
This, Mr. Mayor, this is the second public, this is the continuing...
Right, this is the final go-around. Yeah, I mean, you don't have to, obviously, but this...
Yeah.
But we can, we can take action at this point and pass this? Consistent with your policy, yes, sir. It's on there.
Once it's closed, but I haven't closed it yet, so.
Yeah, right. But we, we can go ahead and pass this today. You have an ordinance for him in front of you, yes, sir. Yeah, okay. I'm too lazy to do it the first time, so I typically don't.
All right, did y'all have, anybody have questions? It is a public hearing, and I have two requests to speak. Risa Johns?
Okay, Risa Johns, 20925 Waterside Drive. I was not here for the last city council meeting, and so I'm curious what the rationalization is behind this. If someone would like to share that information, is it to improve building standards or...
It was designed to improve building standards. It was also designed to not have conflicting languages in Chapter 3 and Chapter 14, and try to have it all in Chapter 3, which deals with the appearance of the buildings and building, and the structures of homes, and how a house should look, and that kind of thing.
There was some ambiguity also.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and one of the main things is the separation of the two chapters in our code of ordinances, Chapter 3 being those that relate to the building codes, whereas Chapter 14 is the zoning codes of Lago Vista. So the idea was to separate everything that could be separated so that those requirements were found in the, in the proper chapter and referenced in the other, because it, there was a lot of, of overlapping language in those two chapters.
I'm not being familiar with those two chapters, but having stood before the P&amp;Z and you all on a zoning issue, I do understand that some of that does need to be cleaned up, and I do appreciate your efforts in doing that. My concern at the 65%, and I've heard a couple of rumors and comments from the last city council meeting, and I've talked to a couple builders, and the builders' positions are totally opposite. Some thoroughly support it because they believe it will improve the building standards, and it will make the buildings, the properties last longer. There are other people that say it will price people out of being able to purchase homes because it will add to the cost of the properties, and the builders are not a charity. Of course, those costs will be passed along to the purchasers. So my question is, is there a compromise somewhere in between? I don't know, I, I do know that there are 100% communities, Waterford being one, and there are other communities around here that do require 100% masonry. I don't see Lago being Waterford, and I would suggest a compromise between the 25% and the 65%.
I've got a little bit of input here. As this was presented to us, Risa, we, we were trying to compare ourselves kind of to the standards of Lakeway, and I agree with you, I think there's some number in between, and we were told that that was, this was a standard we'd like to reach, but we're, we're flexible on that number, was my understanding. So if you had a number as a longtime real estate professional that you would like to suggest, I think it would definitely be entertained. Everyone seemed open to those numbers, but no one had a real, in our discussions, no one had a hard position on 65%.
I thought that's what we did agree on.
Yeah, I would disagree with that, because I, I'm one of those people that would support 65%. Now, one of the things that Mr. Jambo pointed out is that the 65% is not necessarily masonry, it is approved materials.
Which can be concrete siding and...
Can be other things, yes.
Would Hardy Plain count since it's a cement audit?
Please come to the mic.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Risa Johns, again, my question is, when you contact an insurance company as far as getting insurance... as far as getting insurance, and you tell them that there is a percentage of stone or brick in hardy plank, they consider hardy plank because it's a cement product a masonry product. So would hardy plank be considered in that 65% or not?
It would not.
It would not? Okay, thank you.
Is it acceptable for the remaining finished surfaces, but not, like, the remaining 35%?
The 35%.
Not in the 65%?
Okay, thank you.
All right. I also have, is it Chacey? Chassy. I saw two S's, but I wasn't sure. Chassy Wallace.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I, too, wasn't at the last meeting, but I did listen to part of the recorded meeting and took note of the proposed changes to the building regulations and zoning ordinances. A few of the items that are a specific concern to me, as well as some other builders that I know, are the approved building materials, the percentage of coverage of approved materials, and the covering of the exposed slabs that may be, you know, two feet or higher above the base elevation. As regards the approved building materials, it was said that ones to be approved were chosen due to durability and the requirement of less maintenance. I beg to differ that stucco and stone are necessarily less maintenance than a product such as hardy siding. For those of you unfamiliar specifically, hardy siding is mostly a cement product. It's moisture resistant, termite resistant, and guaranteed for 15 years. And I'm speaking specifically on hardy siding. There are other ones, but hardy specifically. And what data was provided that says what are superior products and what are not? I went just to an unbiased place such as Home Advisor and pulled some pros and cons. The pros of hardy board siding are the longevity, the appearance, the fire resistance, and the storm resistance. The cons are only high installation and labor costs, and that it has to be repainted periodically, but it does come with a 15-year warranty. So if hardy siding were to be included as one of the cementious products, then I wouldn't so much be against it. Even the hollows, a lot of their areas allow hardy siding as some of their building materials. Furthermore, requiring 65% stucco, stone, or plaster limits the type that many clients are out, that are looking for to achieve right now. A beautiful modern stone farm, a beautiful modern farmhouse was built over on Camel Bag, and it doesn't have any stone on the front facade, and it's an absolutely gorgeous house. A better control would be to approve products based on the provided elevations that you may require the builders to submit. It's baffling to me that a builder can build the same three elevations over and over again, but yet the creativity and diversity of people building out here would be stifled. Perhaps we should provide builders with a dozen elevations they can build from. My third concern is the exposed concrete foundation. Obviously, the expense is a huge concern, especially on lots with significant fall. A suggestion would be to furnish something called underpinning, which is basically a thin coat of stucco or plaster that can be painted. It also doesn't have a bad look if it's left in its natural raw gray color. If it's aesthetics that are a concern, what would be proposed for a foundation built with pier and beam and an unfinished underneath? This would be much more unsightly and, but a much more cost-effective way if the foundations are made to be covered entirely with these finishes. I ask that you become more educated on the building materials and options before voting on these changes, and I'd be happy to sit with any one of you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Roy your questions?
Sure.
Roy, can't stucco be put on the...
Right.
May I have that one, the expect...
Roy. Roy.
Stucco couldn't be put on the foundation.
Right, on the concrete.
On the concrete.
Just raw unfinished concrete that we're trying to eliminate.
We were looking for materials that would last longer.
Roy, for the farmhouse idea and for a different type of home, we still have a variance process, right? So...
And more importantly, one of the aspects, one of the significant aspects of moving it from fourteen to three is that the standard for variance is quite different, you know, in front of the building committee. The standard there is not a hardship, if you will. It's equivalency. You know, if you've got a product that's equal in your opinion, and you can take it in front, certainly, we're not trying to stifle anybody's creativity. Go in front of the building committee, ask for relief. We fully expect, like I said, it's a misnomer. That was one of the reasons we did this. Instead of trying to categorize products, we simply listed all the acceptable products. Once again, some of them are somewhat dated and probably haven't been commonly used in more than a decade. We suspect that at some point, you know, people will submit new materials and say, would you consider adding these to the list of the required materials? That would be normal. At some point, some of those may drop off.
Nothing is actually wood, though, that's in the approved list right now?
Right. Nope. And once again, she was exactly right. The difference between hardy plank and the others is that it requires periodic painting, and the idea was, is to maintain a certain level of appearance without, you know, even if it's neglected, if you will. And it's not painted as often as it should.
Roy.
Yes, sir.
So explain to me why architectural concrete masonry units are prohibited, split face?
Yeah, and it's not that they're a bad material. They're just, they don't seem to be... They're somewhat commercial in appearance. You know, you don't even see it very often, that much anymore, although there's some textured concrete block that looks somewhat like stone. You'll see some on commercial buildings along Anderson Mills, some of the convenience stores, for example. But, you know, the heavily textured fluted block, I think 7-Eleven used that traditionally for about 10 years, but they haven't, I haven't seen it on a convenience store even in a long time. It's somewhat of a commercial-looking product. It's nothing wrong with it. You just don't expect to see it in residences.
I just, so, no, they just built an addition to our fire station, and that's what...
Right. Well, it's a good-looking product. It's acceptable on the commercial end. It's not allowed as one of the required materials on residential property.
So as we move into more of the, we talk about multi-use property nowadays more than ever, and so a lot of commercial-looking, multi-story, multi-use properties are going to probably want to use split face block?
Right, and it's allowed there.
So...
Yeah, it's only prohibited on the single-family and two-family residential. And it's not prohibited, it's just not one of the, it's not going to meet the 65%. You don't want a predominantly fluted block house, you know, in Highland Lakes, for example.
We're remaining flexible enough, though, for variances if they have a nice...
Absolutely. If you, you know, and once again, there's a huge range of materials that meet that requirement. You know, glazed block, tile, you know, a number of modern houses. It's not going to preclude them.
And we also brought the multifamily down from 75%.
Yeah, I mean, the idea was that they're so close together, you know, hard to justify the 10% difference. But the main gist, once again, I mean, Don is absolutely right. You know, when we wrote the ordinance, we didn't spend a lot of time debating what the number was. What we spent a lot of time on was making sure we removed the ambiguity in exactly how you calculate. And once again, the foundations, just trying to, you know, eliminate the large expanses of unfinished concrete. You know, we fully expect the standard solution to that to be of a near plaster. It's not only allowed, it's expected.
Chassy, did you have more? Sorry.
I did. I was just going to clarify my statement on the hardy siding. The hardy siding itself has 20 to 30 years, and the paint is guaranteed for 15. That doesn't mean that you're going to have to repaint it in 15 years. And I show a lot of homes that haven't been cared for in about 15 years that are all stone, and the stone's not pretty. So I think that's a poor excuse for not allowing the hardy siding. And stucco is the same thing. Have you ever seen the spider craps, cracks in stucco? That's for poor maintenance and water getting up underneath it and discoloring it.
I believe, I believe that when you talk about stucco, there are different kinds of stucco, and some of them are poorer than others. Now, I would, I'd like to add that I've owned a home that had hardy, and to think that you don't have to paint it very often is, I would argue that. Because you do have to paint it about as often as you would if you had a wooden home.
Do you feel like if we came to a compromise, would 50% be a meaningful enough number to allow more flexibility and less monotony if we all end up with...
I think 50%, if you're not going to allow the hardy siding, is still a high number.
Still too high?
Yes.
Risa? I had the same question for you, Risa. Do you feel like 50% would be a meaningful compromise?
Well, I have a different suggestion in line with that. Mr. Jambore mentioned Highland Lake Estates, and I think rather than a broad sweep percentage across all of Lago, you may look at different percentages in different sections of Lago. You know, and I know that that opens up a different can of worms. I know your jobs are hard, but I just, you know, at his suggestion, I just think 65% is high. Could I live with 50? Not ideally, but I see both pros and cons to it. But again, my suggestion of different sections of Lago.
35?
I'm not going to come up with a major...
Mayor. May I be recognized?
Yes.
I'm not sure that council members should be arguing or discussing percentages with the audience, the folks you need to be visiting with as us. I just want to place myself in the same position that Mr. Davales is in, and indicate that I think that the wheres is in the ordinance exactly explain what we, I thought we agreed to do at the first meeting. And finally, I'm painting my hardy plank in seven years.
So, Ms. Wallace, I have a question, since you're with the builder. This 65%, you say it might be cost prohibitive to some builders, or maybe Risa made that statement. As you have, as y'all have read this, what do you, what do y'all think as far as an increase to a builder? What, what would y'all see?
I don't understand why it has to be... Excuse me?
Increase in cost, you say, on a house with these new requirements? What kind of increase?
It really depends on what finish you're using. I mean, it does. What kind of stone you're using, what kind of facade you're looking for, the quality of the stucco job you're getting. There's a lot of, there's a lot of variables.
Okay. Thank you. Sir?
I think I'm on the list, too. I was supposed to be, but maybe not.
Teresa Salina, Chassy. I don't have yours.
Oh, there you go. She's...
There it is.
There it is.
I missed my stand.
Just in time. So I'm Matt Garrett. I'm a 30306 Emerson. So I'm a builder as well, and a certified insurance counselor. So there you go. I'm an insurance broker as well. But I've been building for 30 years, and I certainly understand the concern, Chansey's concern of building the cost on this. When you look at the cost of siding, the hardy plank, I'd never used hardy plank before where we used to build, but it is extremely durable and extremely heavy. It is very difficult to drill a nail or drill a screw through or anything, and it lasts quite a long time. I've lived in several of them now. And I agree that you don't have to paint it. I mean, just kind of typical. It doesn't chip, and you see the wood behind it or anything like that. It lasts a long time. I think it's more of an aesthetic issue. I think what the concern possibly is, is just like, I don't like the way it looks because some of the houses around here, the older, some of the older houses are siding, and they look kind of like rundown. We don't have a whole lot of, like, stone houses, well, except for some of the wider ones that have to be power washed, and they look bad, too. So the cost, we have hardy plank being at one cost, you have stone being another cost, and then you have stucco being up here. And so the concern for builders is, how are we going to keep the cost down to keep the houses affordable, which they continue to rise based upon the cost of the increased sewer and the cutting and patching fees, and the material costs go up? We're, we're like hitting a ceiling of, we can't chart, we can only sell the house for so much. We are not Lakeway. We don't want to be Lakeway, but we're trying to keep it somewhat affordable. So why on earth would we want to increase the cost for just aesthetics? Okay, when it already, you know, you've got beautiful houses with siding. The durability, it's going to last, period. You still have to paint stucco. You still have to maintain stone. My suggestion is, if you're interested, and we want to make sure that it looks good, why, most of us are concerned about what the house looks like from the front. We're not so much concerned about the house, what it looks like in the back as much, unless it's on a golf course. My suggestion is, when the original, the way it's set up right now is 25% coverage. So as a builder, I can put the whole front of the house in beautiful stone or stucco or whatever to make it more appealing. Or I can do a combination, which is more appealing for a lot of people, and then I might do a little bit in the back, in the back patio, to make, if I, if I, because I think that's where a lot of people are going to spend their time at. We don't do a whole lot on the side because you never ever go over there. You're not entertaining over there. So why would we want to put a product that's going to just do nothing but increase the price of the house and make it less affordable for people on the sides of the houses where most people don't care about? So my suggestion would be, if you want to increase the percentage of stucco, make it on the front of the house. Go 65%. Or make it a higher percentage in the front of the house, and not so much concern about the sides or the rear. Because, again, we can keep the cost down, and if we want to add stone to the back, then it's just an extra selling point that separates us. So I think that might, that way you don't have to look at it as much.
Well, let me, let me say a couple of things, if I may. If you listen to the people that I listen to, which are my constituents, there are a lot of people that are very concerned about some of the houses that are being built that do not satisfy even the 25% of the overall size of the house. When you're talking about doing just the entire front, the house would have to be a cube for that to satisfy the 25% as it exists now. That's even being abused, as far as I'm concerned. And I think a lot of the people that I represent feel the same way.
So you're saying that, that a lot of the houses are not being built with the 25% now?
That's correct.
And that, and that it would, in order to do the front, and you wouldn't satisfy, if you did just the front, it would have to be a square in order to satisfy that 25%? Is that what you're saying?
If the, if the 25% were going to be just the front.
Right.
It would have to be the same dimensions on all four sides.
Right.
And it had to be pretty much a...
Right, I guess if, yeah, I guess if you kind of took out a measuring stick, and you kind of measured all that stuff, I think, but they're, I mean, thank goodness they're not, I mean, the building department here is fantastic. They're not so anal that they're going, you're off 14 square inches. I think, though, that I hear your point, in that I agree with you. I think that there has to be, and some people are not interested in building up the value of the houses, not the cost, but the value by making them aesthetically pleasing. There's a lot of them in here. Some builders, unlike the ones that are here, don't live in the community. I live here. I see my customers in the grocery store. I want to build up the value. I want to help the city. And so I try to make those houses, make it look as good as they can. So I agree with you that we, the ordinance has to be followed, for sure, at least the 25% what it is right now. And you're right, some of them, I've looked at them going, wait a minute, there's no stucco in the front of that house. At least require that some of the 25% or a big portion of it to be in front of, in the front of the house, to make that aesthetically pleasing. That makes sense?
Right. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, right now, it's 25% of the whole structure.
The whole thing.
The whole structure.
Right.
Not just each individual surface. Not just each individual surface.
But zero, oh no, it's the total. Zero percent could be in the front.
Which I think needs to be changed. I think it needs to be changed. And, and I think that that would, your constituents, you know, would be happy. Because now you're looking at, at beautiful, more beautiful houses going down the street versus, you know, just kind of blah. You know, you might as well have like a, a, a trailer or something. I don't know. It, it's just not, it's just not aesthetically pleasing. So I agree that there should be some sort of minimum on the front elevation.
Like a seventy-five percent on the front and twenty-five on the other surfaces?
I think that's a good one. What do you think?
This has been vetted.
We already addressed that.
We already addressed it.
It can be zero percent on anything that can only be seen in any rear yard. So those are, those can be zero. They're just not even in the calculation. So to an extent, we, we've addressed it in a different way, similarly.
So it can be, so it can be zero anyplace else, but it's just mainly in the front? You're talking about sixty-five percent of the front?
Any, any surface that can only be seen from any rear yard is not included, is exempt. Do whatever you want.
So what about the big, long side yards?
The portion that can only be seen in a rear yard is exempt. Anything that can only be seen from a rear yard is exempt.
Well, you can see some, you can see the side yards from the front, can't you?
A portion of it, yes. So a portion of the side has to meet the requirement, a portion of it does not.
Now you're just, again, we already, we've already stipulated that the building materials are going to last, period. It's not a difference in structure. It's not a difference in whether they're going to last longer. Now we're just adding on cost to the side for no apparent reason.
The reason is aesthetics. You're, you're absolutely right. And also the durability of, of the materials that are being used. The, let me just be real blunt. The people that, that I listen to ask me, why are you allowing people to build homes that bring down the value of my home when, you know, when I, my house was built, it was built to this standard, and now you're, the standards are lax? And, and my property is, as a result, I feel has been devalued by allowing these kinds of buildings to occur. That's what I hear, and I hear it over and over again.
Yes, and I can understand their concern. I understand. Because a lot of people have invested their entire livelihood into their home here. And now they see these, these inexpensive homes being built. And it's got to be crushing to see that, and their values going down. You know, that, that this is their nest egg. Yeah, and it's, it's extremely frustrating. It's frustrating for me as a builder, because I don't like to see that. I have a home out here. I don't like to see the, my value going. I now I have...
Ma'am?
You got to come to the microphone.
The farmhouse that's made out of the hardy plank is actually worth more these days because it's trending and it's durable, and that's what people want, and they will pay more for the modern. So it's not bringing values down, it's actually bringing values up. So I just wanted to clear that up with everybody because there's a misconception. I've heard it from, from people when I'm doing open houses, the older folk, what are you doing? Why? You know, they ask me, and I explained to them, I said, this is only going to help you. I explained the value with this type of home. Wait and see. And they do, and they sell for much, much more than the other style.
The modern style.
Can you provide your name for the record, please? Sharon Byrd, thirty-three oh six Emerson Cove.
Risa?
Okay, Risa Johns, again. You're talking about one builder in particular, probably, who is building quite a few homes that aren't meeting code. My question to the council is, it seems like you're doing a broad brush reaction to something that has kind of gotten through the system. And the question is, how, how was that particular builder allowed to not follow the rules with the twenty-five percent? That seems to be the issue that a lot of people talk to me about, and I understand what your constituents are saying, because I hear it, because I'm in real estate. And it seems like this is a broad reaction to that. And how were they allowed to do that?
I don't know that they were allowed to. I think that's just a perception. People look at it and think, I don't know that if you went out and measured it, that they were under it, but it just, when you look at it, it doesn't look like it's got twenty-five percent.
No, it doesn't. I totally agree.
It doesn't.
And, and you're saying it doesn't?
Mathematically, it does not.
It does not?
No.
And maybe that's the problem, they're not following the rules.
This has been thoroughly vetted by the building committee.
When we have somebody apply for a permit and we do the calculations and they don't meet the twenty-five percent, you know, what they do is they'll take a little, you know, six-inch row of stone and wrap it around a column here and a column there, and it's something nobody sees. They're meeting the ordinance, but they're paying lip service to the requirement. They're not taking it in earnest. That's the reality. They're pushing the envelope. And there's enough ambiguity in the ordinance right now where it's difficult. Once again, the foundations don't count, you know, that sort of thing. There's no specific way in which you calculate the percentage, what's exempt, what's not. All that is, like I said, you can argue the numbers all you want, debate it, come up with a number. We will defend the methodology wholeheartedly, i.e. be real specific.
And you had, and you had a subcommittee that worked on this, that had both the building committee, planning and zoning, city, and everyone to come up with this ordinance that we have. Is the public hearing still open or closed?
I'm about to close it whenever... One last question.
You got to come to the mic. Come on up to the mic. They can't hear you at home if you're not at the mic.
Sorry. And were there builders on that committee?
They met with builders on that committee, yes.
Okay, because I'm hearing, that, I think that would be smart, because the builders that truly are, are invested in this community want what we're talking about. And those are the people that should be like part of the architectural review committee, so that we can help the city do what we can to keep those other builders out.
Yes.
So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
So my name is Greg Teal. I live in Waterford. And I am, I'm a big fan of stucco, one hundred percent. I use it on almost all of my houses. I support what Chastey's saying. The hardy siding is a phenomenal product. If you use good paint, it will last a long time, up to fifty years is the warranty portion of it. I live here, and I'm about to build two houses here. And I've listened to a lot of the discussions, and it seems to me that one builder is creating a lot of heartburn for you guys. If, if, if there's a code, let's follow it and enforce it and not let guys, you know, just wrap a column to meet the, meet the, the required amount. But I want to see our values grow here. I, I'm not, I'm not interested in building a, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar cookie cutter house. And so, there's a need for that, but let's, let's do what's best for our community so it looks great, and in twenty years from now, those houses still look great and have ordinances that if somebody's not maintaining their house, fix it. That's all I'd ask.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at eight oh five P.M. All right, at this time, if we have any other, any more council discussion, if not, I will, I'm ready for action.
Maybe I'd like to make a motion?
Okay.
I move that we adopt ordinance number nineteen dash oh one dash seventeen dash oh one.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries five to two. Number seven. The Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance number nineteen dash oh one dash one seven dash oh two. An ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending section fifteen dot one zero of chapter fourteen, the Lago Vista zoning ordinance, to prohibit all forms of zoning and variance applications authorized by that chapter that are substantially the same as the one that has been denied for at least twelve months from the date of the latest form of denial and providing for related matters. This public hearing is already open.
Yes, sir. As you recall from last month, zoning district change requests are prohibited when they've been denied for a twelve-month period. This simply extends that same moratorium, if you will, on every form of, of application that's authorized by chapter fourteen. The only thing that it leaves is, of course, subdivision applications, and those will be handled when we amend the subdivision ordinance. But, you know, it's, it's fairly typical to prohibit identical applications coming back immediately after being denied. The, the theory is, is that, you know, neither the opponents nor the supporters should have to keep coming up here every month.
Okay, I have a, just a word and question. It says denied for at least twelve months. So if it was denied in less than twelve months, they could reapply?
No, the, the idea, once again, it's, you cannot come back within twelve months. You can come back fifteen months, eighteen months, but...
At least means equal to or more.
Yeah. And that's...
So I'm still confused.
Sure.
Equal to or more than twelve months. So if it's only been six months, I can...
You can't come.
You can't. If you've been denied in, once again...
Than two, twelve months. Equal to twelve months or more than one month.
Either twelve months or, or longer than twelve months.
Okay, so that means the same one that has been... I guess there's not a comma there in there or something. It's not reading, it's not flowing properly. To prohibit all forms of zoning and variance that authorized, that has been denied, comma, for at least twelve months. Okay.
Yes.
There's not a comma in there. I knew something wasn't right. Now I understand. Thank you.
I will, I will put the comma in there.
I'm like saying that pledge of allegiance, there's no comma. There shouldn't be a comma here.
Yeah, but that's not what it reads.
All right.
But there's no at least in the standard. Well, but never...
Right. That was in the description only, right.
Okay. So do you ought, anybody have any questions from, from the dice? All right, this is a public hearing and it's still open. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to ask questions? All right, hearing none. I will close the public hearing at eight oh nine P.M. And it's open to council discussion or action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept ordinance number nineteen oh one dash seventeen dash oh two.
I second it.
Right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Number eight. The Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance number nineteen dash oh one dash seventeen dash oh three. An ordinance of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, amending various sections of chapter fourteen, the Lago Vista zoning ordinance, adding definitions and modifying the provisions related to required yards and their locations and provided for, providing for related matters. This public hearing is already open.
Again, this was, as discussed last month, identifying and requiring that there be some entry on what's designated as the front yard. It introduces a new concept called a reverse corner lot, which basically explains that if you have a corner lot and, and you're adjacent to somebody else's front yard, you get to meet the requirements of a front yard. It certainly puts some limitations on the smaller corner lots that we have in this community, but I went randomly checking for some of the smallest ones we had. And it doesn't look like you would, you might prohibit some floor plans from being built on there, but there are plenty of, of floor plans where you can meet the minimum area requirements easily, even with that requirement.
Thank you. Counsel? All right, this is a public hearing that is open for citizen comment, questions? All right, hearing none, I will close this public hearing at eight twelve P.M. And it is now open for council discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number nineteen dash zero one dash seventeen dash zero three.
I second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We're considering the approval of December sixth, two thousand and eighteen special called workshop meeting minutes, December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, council retreat minutes, and December twenty, two thousand and eighteen, regular council meeting minutes.
Mayor?
Sir?
Move approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, consent agenda is approved unanimously. City manager report.
Mayor, the only report I have was that the course sold, said that earlier, so just like to reiterate one more time, that the Highland Lakes Golf Course property has effectively sold, and the city does not own it any longer. That's my entire report, mayor.
And it is owned by?
A company owned by Ezekiel Cho. And if you ask my report tomorrow, mayor, it'll be the exact same report. That's all.
Is there any complications to report?
No, sir.
Done.
Malcolm Wood. All right. Eleven. Future meetings. Consider our schedule. Any items for future council meetings? I had something, but I forgot, so...
Well, depending on whether we can get that downhill all set up by the third, it might appear on February seventh.
We have the presentation for the bicycle race. Lane Hughes is bringing that.
Yeah, that's on the seven.
All right, maybe I'll think of it tomorrow.
All right, Mayor, if I, if I may. For the next council meeting, we may have an update on where we are with the process of getting to scenic city certification.
All right. That'll be nice. Excuse me just a second. All right, I can't think of what it was. All right. We are looking at executive session, and does anybody have any reason at this point? Were we...
No.
No.
Okay. All right. We will not convene, and I will declare this meeting adjourned at eight sixteen P.M. I missed it by sixteen minutes. So I didn't have my timer up there.